I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now I'd like to have a moment of silence. I ask that you remember our people in Israel and the Ukraine. Thank you. Taking a look at the agenda, do I have any questions or comments about the agenda? Number five, questions or comments about the consent agenda?
Move to approve.
We don't vote today.
It's been so long.
It's been a long time.
You miss saying that.
Why is nobody saying that?
Can I say approved?
We'll have the Boy Scouts here on Thursday.
Thursday, that's correct.
Color Guard ceremony.
This is really loud.
Visitors will also be on Thursday night. Number eight, Rutherford Proud.
So we'll be doing that Thursday night as well.
Okay.
So we save that till Thursday. Thursday's gonna be a lengthy celebration. Yep.
Pack your lunch. Number nine, special education.
So special education, Dr. Ralston, do you want to go tonight or would you rather go today? Tonight?
I've lost control.
Yes, let's.
All right, me and Sullivan need a break.
We can get started again.
Okay.
I think y'all need another fall break.
That's great. So Dr. Ralston is here. She's gonna give the board an update as requested at the end of last year regarding on-the-job injury numbers, our reset room data, restraint data, and Skyward discipline data. Welcome tonight, today.
All right, and I have packets for you guys. I'll be receiving you later. Do you want me to talk into the microphone? I really think there should be a stool here. You know, it's okay. So, wanted to give you guys a first quarter review of just a few data pieces. We can go on to the next slide. There's only six slides, so it's gonna take no time. Discipline referrals, that report is gonna come out of Skyward. Restraint reports, that information is from TN Pulse, which is the new ed plan. On-the-job injury reports, which is county reporting, and the reset room data, which is data collection log that all of the behavior interventionists are doing in the elementary schools. So first and foremost, we have the discipline referrals. So as you can see, I've broken up all of the discipline items into violent acts, threats of violent acts, or other. Of course, the other falls into drugs, defiance, disruption, demerits, things like that. Skipping, that falls into other. But when you look across the numbers, elementary schools, middle schools, high schools, and specialty schools, you'll see a total number. The number in parentheses is the number of students with disabilities. So that's 276 of those 200 were students with disabilities.
Okay.
So you will see that number there. So when you look at those violent acts, it does, what speaks to you there? This is a quiz. I was a teacher. So what speaks to you with that violent acts? Like where are the majority of them?
They're coming from a half of.
Elementary schools, which led us to have those reset rooms, right, in the elementary schools, okay? So when we look at the threats of violent acts, those are either electronic, those are also something that students said to each other, or students made threats to the whole school. So you'll see those, the majority of those were in middle school, from a middle school, former middle school person. I understand that as well. So let's move on to the next slide. When you look at restraint reports, elementary 46, middle school 10, and high school 1. This is for all of the first quarter. I have it posted here. Last year, in the year 2223, elementary school had 35, middle school had 31, and high school had 20. So our numbers have improved quite a bit. They did jump in elementary, but that's to be expected. We grew a lot this year, right? In a lot of our schools, we added some more IPK classes, a lot of our kindergarten classes grew as well. That's where we saw a lot of our restraints, okay?
Even in kindergarten, we're, by percentages, we're getting better.
Yeah, absolutely. So then when you, and I'm gonna prove it. So when we look at on-the-job injury, if you will hover, don't click, but hover over the total, okay, so there are 25 in the total of 2122. The special education students in 2122 were 22 of those. In 2223, that number went down to 21 as the total. Special education, 19, went down again. Go to 23. 18 is our total. Special education, 18. So we've gone down every year in our on-the-job injury. We went down in our restraints. We've gone down in lots of other areas. Now, go to the next slide, please. I'm very excited. Just August. Mm-hmm, absolutely. Yes, ma'am. That's okay. You're gonna get a packet. It's totally okay. Okay, elementary reset rooms. So when you look at August and September, these are the reset rooms. This is where kids go to de-escalate. We've seen from the previous slides that our numbers were higher in elementary school than they were in middle and high. We saw that. You guys saw that as a board. So you gave us those positions to use in those areas. So when we use those, we put them into these reset rooms. We've equipped them with de-escalation skills. We've equipped them with different products that help the kids de-escalate, and we've trained the teachers on how to use those. So when you look at August, you got a honeymoon period in August, right? Not everybody starts right away in August as well. Lots of people start after Labor Day. So when you look, the total number of students who went to the reset room are in the bright turquoise, the top line. The middle line are the number of students with disabilities, I'm sorry, the number of students that do not have disabilities. And the lower line is the number of students who use the reset room with disabilities. So you'll see in September, we are using it. We are using our reset rooms a ton, and it's working. I wanna brag on Barfield for just a second. I did a visit to Barfield and I went straight to the reset room 'cause I heard about this lighting in here that was really amazing. It is. It's very calm. I could've stayed in there all day. A student came in, set the timer for five minutes. He was an older student, sat down, played with the ball, fidgeted, sat on a beanbag. Timer goes off. He goes, "I think I'm okay to go take my test now." Gets up, goes, takes his test. I go out in the hallway and I say, "Hey, hold on just one second. Do you mind if I ask you a question and tell him who I am?" And he says, "Yeah, go ahead." So I said, "What do you get out of this, this reset room? Like is it just, are you trying to get out of the test or whatever?" He said, "No. I really was really anxious or worried about taking the test, and now I'm not. I had to just kind of step away." I said, "How are you gonna use this next year in middle school?" He says, "I know that I can go to the bathroom and get some water and come back and get my job done." Okay.
Let me ask a question. So the resets, do we put a reset room at every elementary school?
We have them at most all of our elementary schools. Some schools share them. They share the person, but there is a reset room there.
Okay.
So the schools that are sharing a person, but they have a reset room, they have other people in those elementary schools that are actually running the reset room because they see the benefit in it.
Okay, good. How many do we, coaches do we get, behavioral coaches?
Twenty-two.
Intervention for elementary?
Twenty-two. Is that right?
Twenty-two?
Somewhere between 19 and 22, depending on how we split them and how we coded their cost.
Okay. So this data indicates that next year, we could get more.
I will always ask for more.
Well, that's good to know. Well, if it's working, I would imagine that they will want to hire in some areas.
Any other questions? Before you leave tonight, I will give you a packet that has all this information in there, okay?
Great news, yeah.
Thank you so much. And thank you for collecting all this data and doing that for us. So I really appreciate it. Thank you.
I also want to give her a shout-out because she's our special education coordinator and not just our data discipline coordinator. Those are two separate roles, but she falls into it. So thank you, Dr. Ralston, for doing it. Thank you to the board for supporting those positions 'cause that is over a million and a half, $2 million that got allocated to behavior positions.
Number 10, calendar.
All right, number 10, the calendar. The calendar committee met to discuss the 2425 school year calendar. They took a survey of four options to the principals, and 53.7 of the votes chose option four, which is detailed below. So let me give you a little bit of a background. So it is in policy of how our calendar committee is comprised. One person from each school is on the calendar committee. We have one kind of big training to kick it all off and talk about the number of days that you have to have between 180 instructional days, the number of days that are discretionary, in-service days, teacher vacation days. I always take this as a time just to remind everyone that teachers aren't paid in the summer. Those are not days that they're paid. They get 10 vacation days a year, but they're outlined for them, and you can see that on this Rutherford County Schools calendar, option four. So what were the main options? There's not a whole lot of room with days that we can move around. So we have to go 180 instructional days. We have to build in some discretionary days. We have to build in in-service days. We also don't start before August 1st. Our county payroll isn't able to operate if we start July 31st, so we can't start till August 1st. So we begin August 1st. Next year has a couple strange ones, in that you see we have to close for Election Day. We also, August 1st falls on a Thursday, so we lose a couple of those beginning-of-school days to the weekend. And so the other big change I will point out is we always try to go at least 40 days for the first nine weeks. I like to tell you that they're all an equal 45, but they're not. And the first nine weeks being 40 days, and when we go our 40-ish days, that pushes fall break back one week than it has been. And so on every option, that's when fall break was. Otherwise, we would've had the first quarter ending after only seven weeks instead of eight or nine weeks, which is traditional. The main option differences, they all started on August 1st. A couple options did not have us out for Thanksgiving break, which was the tradition. It was kind of started this last year. So they had the option to choose to be in school Monday and Tuesday at Thanksgiving break. If they chose that option, then teachers would've been out before Memorial Day. Instead, the option that was created kept Thanksgiving break as the week out. And then they were originally going to get out of school officially Wednesday or Thursday of May 29th or 30th. In counting the number of days, though, that then put teachers returning on January 2nd and students on January 3rd. We don't necessarily want our kids to return on a Friday or our teachers on January 2nd, especially when you're not getting out till the 20th. So their fourth option, that was kind of created out of a lot of discussion, was to go up until the Friday of May 30th, but that way teachers didn't return till January 6th. One of those in-service days, just like at the beginning of the school year, is an in-service safety day. We just count them as in-service days, and then you'll see when students return. So overall, most of the options, I know it only shows 53%, but when they're choosing between four different options, that's a pretty high percentage to have.
Questions or comments?
I have a question. And I know we're not in city schools, but the city schools and the county do share some of the major holidays together, like the breaks. So if this is the option that we go, their Thanksgiving break will be the same, and the fall break will be the same, and so will the Christmas break, right?
I have no idea. 'Cause would they have their own calendar committee that comes up with theirs, and I don't think they've published next year's yet. Maybe they have, I don't know.
But it has kind of aligned a little bit, though.
We try. Whoever publishes first, then we usually try to follow each other a little bit to be. They can, but they are absolutely not required to. When we all try to have to go the 180 days and the breaks hit the way, we kind of naturally fall around the same area.
Okay.
Great question.
Other questions?
You will also see there are four teacher-admin days built into this. So that would make us, we normally get 13 inclement weather days. In the last couple of years, we have built a teacher-admin day into each quarter. So this would give us nine inclement weather days, just like we have this year.
I've checked the Farmer-Somanac. I think we're gonna be using those. Any other questions or comments? Thank you to the calendar committee. I say this every year, but I was in charge of the calendar committee for many, many years. And sometimes you stand up and you look and you think, none of these days are falling the way they've fallen every other year. So there's usually a little year that goes off and you have to make sure you don't say the J-words, which are July and June. No kidding. Don't try to put people in school or let them out in July and June. So this is a good calendar, and we appreciate it, Dr. Solomon. Number 11, legal.
First, does that mean that you'd like to take back over that responsibility?
I'd do it in a heartbeat.
Okay. I think she wants that in policy, is what she just said.
No. I liked it. What's wrong with me?
All right, legal tab two. You all have a manila folder that has several different students. So the first one is an Attica County transfer student. This student's been requested to admit a transfer student under discipline from another school system. Students are mandated to alter into school for vaping in the classroom. And then according to policy 6.318, the board may deny admission of any student except those in state custody when a student transfers from another school system while under suspension or expulsion. Director of schools recommendations to deny because of space. Can you keep going? Number two, same. So the board's been requested to admit a transfer student under discipline from another school system. Same information as before, except this student was for possession of a vape pen and marijuana. So director of schools recommendations to deny admission as well. Next one is student requesting to admit a transfer student under discipline. The third student was expelled for reckless endangerment, and director of schools recommendation in this case is to deny admission. And fourth is request to admit a transfer student under discipline from another school system expelled for possession of THC, and that recommendation is to deny based on space. And the last one is request to admit a transfer student under discipline from another school system for a student remanded for assaulting another student, and recommendation is to deny admission.
If you have any questions, you need to contact Ms. Monica if there's anything you need to know about any of these students. Number 12, engineering and construction.
Request for black men middle softball. Dr. Jessica Jackson requesting to install and pour a concrete pad for the girls softball team to utilize for a batting cage. The cost for this project is estimated to be $18,000 and to be funded from softball program, the Richard Siegel grant, and donations from the community. Engineering Construction has reviewed the request and recommends approval.
Questions?
Request for a walking track at Smyrna West. So Jenna Stitts' request to provide a walking track at Smyrna West. Funding will be $9,000 from a grant and $7,000 for Coordinated School Health. Engineering Construction is working with Coordinated School Health and the contractor to provide a track that meets this and approves their request.
Questions or comments?
All right, the next one is one that our board has talked about just a little. And so we were notified back last spring that Central Magnet will no longer, they currently utilize city parks for their baseball and softball programs for middle school and high school. I believe in transparency, so I do need to disclose my son is a sixth grader on the middle school baseball team. Was not impacted at that point, but I do feel like that's important to at least note for transparency purposes. So where we are at at this point is we have looked at land, so Central Magnet currently will not have anywhere to play baseball. The city isn't budging on that to provide us a space to play. There are options to talk to other cities. I'm not sure how great that looks for our former Murfreesboro Central to play in other cities, but I guess that's an option to look at. We have looked at MTSU, haven't gotten a lot of traction there in some of their intermural fields to see if we can potentially use the intermural fields there, but that's right in the middle of their intermural season as well. And so the next option, you really come down to continue the programming, we have to build something. And so that's where this comes. I know there will be a lot of discussion. This just kind of gets us moving. So this request is for Engineering Construction to engage Barge, I don't know how to say that.
Coffin?
Coffin, for the Central Magnet athletic field design. The city of Murfreesboro has notified RCS that Central Magnet will no longer be able to utilize city fields for athletic teams. And again, this is for the 25, spring of 25, not this coming year. We're good for the spring of 24. It would be for the spring of 25. Engineering Construction is recommending utilizing Barge Coffin to design softball and baseball facilities for Central Magnet utilizing property at Whitworth Buchanan. Barge Coffin was the designer of record for the campus. The requested fee for this project will be $125,000, or about 5.5% of the estimated $2.5 million construction estimate. Engineering would recommend including $25,000 for reimbursables for a total of $150,000.
Questions or comments? Thank you, Mr. Young.
Can I ask, I am not familiar, but I did have a parent ask me about track because I guess there is no track field essential for the American song either. So I guess my question is, if we're going to move forward with trying to get sports facilities for Central Magnet, how do we determine which sports are getting and which aren't? Because trying to be fair, trying to be equitable, and thank you for saying what you said, 'cause I was kind of learning about Mr. Young. I don't know that I would consider necessarily going back on our word, being that it was a previous board and it didn't consist of current members. I, for one, don't believe that just because you're academically smart, you shouldn't be getting sports on top of that. But I'm totally open to trying to find some out-of-the-box ideas for it to accommodate all the way around. But I would like to know if we're looking at that sports-wise, like what facilities are they in need of? Because I think it extends beyond baseball.
I think for.
Anybody can speak on that as well, of course. This was programs they currently have. So for track, I don't know. I believe they would co-op. Kay, do you know? Do they even have a track program? Do they just practice there?
Madam Chairman, my son went to Central. Within three years, they closed the school. He ran track. They did not have any facilities. They ran in the parking lot, and they ran around the school. And that's been like that for years. So it wasn't, you know, and that was before it became a magnet school. So they haven't discriminated. I mean, they never gave it to the school before. I do think there is some hope. I am eternal optimist, and the city is wanting to put about 10 or 11 ballfields on 96, which possibly could free up perhaps Old Fort Park, which isn't that far from Central. And they could work out some kind of deal there. They need more ballfields. They know that. And I really feel like that is going to pass in the next year. And I don't know how long it takes to put a ballfield together, but hopefully, within two years, we will have extra ballfields, and the problem will be solved.
How long does it take to build the ballfields?
Probably four to five months. Construction, another 12.
About a year and a half.
So, you know, I would say conservatively, a year and a half. So we would conservatively, to meet the deadline of spring, sports, we would need to start sometime, with design at least, sometime January, February, March, something like that, so that we could be under construction, June-ish. 'Cause as part of this, I had, there was an anticipation that because it is out at Whitworth Buchanan, which is a good location, that we would do a small, key being small, restroom facility, that kind of thing. So it would be a standalone. They wouldn't have to go to the middle school to use the restroom or anything like that. That it would be kind of a standalone. Not as big as what we build at our comprehensive high schools, but some type of small facility there for them to utilize for restrooms and concession stands.
'Cause we looked at a lot of different places everywhere we had land. Where was the closest without trying to put an extra burden that we may not use a spot for that site? And I don't know why I didn't think about that with track. Unless a middle school's connected to a high school, they're gonna all run in the parking lot. I should've thought of that as well, so.
Can I ask a question? There are ballfields at some of our elementary schools. There's one at Buchanan, and I asked about, and they said it was middle school approved but not high school approved. Is there any way you can reconfigure it?
That field is not operated by the Rutherford County Board of Education. That is on Rutherford County Board of Education property, and it is operated by the Rutherford County Parks?
In Recreation.
Recreation Department.
As well as the one at Last Cassis, one of them at Christiana, and the one at Rockville, and Walter Hill.
And Walter Hill.
They currently, they're always a good partner with us with Parks and Rec, and we're very, because I.
They would love to partner with us because they have a lot of needs.
But we have toured one of that school in particular and looked at it, 'cause it has a lot of needs as well. Light poles, the lighting's not very good. There's some sinkholes. There's some issues. We've talked about all of these. I even brought up, why don't we try to put one of them at Last Cassis and one of them at Walter Hill?
Sharp. Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Young, I agree with you. I know that that had been a long-time policy, and I'm just gonna throw a big old monkey wrench in the middle of it and talk about Thurman Francis, an arts magnet school, without an auditorium. And there's no plans currently for an auditorium. And that is part of their curriculum. Sports is not part of their curriculum. So that's another thing to be considered.
Very good. Anyone else?
A question. As far as Parks and Rec goes, and even the city of Murfreesboro, if you look at places like Old Fort Park, and they have space there, could we work out some kind of, we've had some troubles working out some deals, but could we possibly work out some deals where, you know, we split the cost or whatever, and they give us a contract on it for X amount of years?
Mr. Reed, do you want to hit on the issue we're having with a tennis court right now for that similar item?
Tennis courts, wind pools.
And the conversations I've had, they were not interesting unless it was all us.
Not really a good deal.
It was not for us. It was not for us.
Not my kind of deal.
Yes, sir.
The city, they just pulled this carpet out of the unders, and we do not have a ballfield planned this morning?
We do have one this morning because would they agree to let us stay one more year?
This morning, we have history, and that's originally, it's nothing, so I appreciate this.
City working with us on that?
Need clarification needed?
I have a question. Just for, just for understanding's sake. Hypothetically, if this were to happen, how much would the cost to maintain it? 'Cause right now, we're not paying anything for maintaining anything. How much would the cost to maintain it?
School has to pay for it.
The schools pay for the maintaining of all athletic fields?
I have a question. Have, do they have a booster program that could help pay for a significant portion of this? I know the other schools have had to rely on booster programs.
They have to build turf, but not to build a field.
Not for the field, like.
Well, I know at Whitworth Buchanan, the baseball booster program raised money. So they, I think.
Now, I think they got some funding from some businesses and basically put that baseball thing together. They didn't have a... I'm sorry, I'm not a baseball person. I know, I love sports.
They had a backstop and a fence. We built them all a place to play, so they had a backstop and a fence.
Yeah, not a backstop, but it's the, where they sit.
No.
The dugout. I'm sorry, I'm having a...
Middle schools, we provide dugouts, bleachers.
Bleacher dugout.
Backstops, complete fence, sod and infield. We do not provide the irrigation. So they do have their dugout. We do provide that for middle school softball and baseball.
No, it's small. Like I opened it at Rocky Fork. It's not as, this big, but it is something. So most of them take it out the very first year and build their own.
Now, you are correct. Whitworth Buchanan's Booster Club built that large building that is beside them.
Okay.
They did build that. They're one of the few middle schools that have what I call a sports bar. They're one of the few middles.
A sponsorship for someone, someone.
They got some sponsorships. I just didn't know if Central Magnet parents would be able to come with some of the funds as well.
I think for one, since it's on a different school's property, the board would need to be okay with it being placed on that Whitworth Buchanan property first. And that would be, that would be a first step because Central Parents raising funds to put it on Whitworth Buchanan's property. Whitworth is aware, they know, we talked about it four or five months ago. I think that would be a first step as well.
It's just a lot of money.
Huge work, yes.
So many other things.
I hate that it comes to this because it should not.
Anyone else? This is a lot of money, but it's something we need to really be thinking about along with some of those other suggestions that y'all had. Very good. Number thirteen?
Directors update.
Yes, open enrollment is going on right now. If there's no changes to be made, this is a passive enrollment. This year also for the next year, the 2024 school year, we'll be working with the county general again on OJI and then looking at 2025 and determining if, based on the last five to seven years, if our data shows that we should go with workers comp or OJI. So we have an upcoming meeting on that area.
I'd also like to compliment Dr. Anthony. I realized this week that we, that someone, we're not sure who, had not told the post sixty-five retirees that we weren't changing insurance. So I kept getting people asking me, what are we doing? Are we going to the state or we staying with the county? So I wrote Dr. Anthony and I asked her, I don't know who's supposed to tell the post sixty-five retirees this, but they'd like to know what their insurance is going to look like next year. And immediately she answered and they're getting out a letter and an email to our post sixty-five. Plus, they don't know about that Cigna. They knew the Cigna was going to pull out a TriStar, but they didn't know that it had been worked out. So two things that they need to know and Dr. Anthony and Suzette took care of it. So that is highly appreciated.
We didn't mind if the county general did that, which is our normal item, but we wanted to make sure we were communicating with them as well.
Yeah, good thing. Number fourteen, financial report.
We'll do that Thursday.
Thursday?
Yep. It'll be small because we just did the one at the second September board meeting. So our longer, our larger one's always the second one once payroll hits.
Anyone else? Directors update?
All right, so a couple of things, directors update. I have Project Basic here. We're going to call them up in just a minute surrounding mental health and volunteer behavior, mental health as well. But I want to call your attention to the Rutherford County rezoning. I sent this to you all earlier. This is just a, an overview from RSP of some of the main takeaways. So we will meet with them next week. Our principals meet with them next week to gather input on suggestions as well, but this is kind of an overview. You also have a file that has all of the individual comments on it. And so you'll see kind of where the survey results were, pretty much split down the middle. And really what they agreed with is you'll see the participants tended to reside in where we would expect, where we were looking to make the biggest changes. Stewart's Creek, Brown's Chapel and Blackman. Seventy-nine percent of the participants agree there's not a long-term zoning solution until more facilities are added. So I don't think that's a shock to anyone. The majority of participant comments illustrated requests for improvements and then you see kind of where they were looking at. The probably one that is the most impactful is number three, so page three. And kind of the way that we are looking at this is that you will see that here's some of the potential revisions that RSP is looking at. So elementary for concept one, consider moving Clear Creek subdivision back into Stewart's Creek Elementary School zone, move it out of Brown's Chapel. That takes Stewart's Creek instead of being at eighty-five to ninety percent. They said it brings you back towards that ninety to ninety-five, but for the number of kids impacted, it's definitely doable. You'll also see they, I wanted to stay just looking straight at concept one, but they also included it in concept two. So that's one that based on feedback, they would go with both of them. And then they have a second subdivision as well for the Blakeney subdivision back into Stewart's Creek Elementary School. Middle school in option one, kind of one of the main takeaways was consider fixing Broken Stonewood neighborhood for Stewart's Creek Middle School. So there's apparently a cul-de-sac along Mandarin Court. And then high school, consider moving one of the areas north of I-24 back to Blackman High School to improve transportation to Segal. So those were the potential revisions based on impact for concept one. Concept two is a little bit more and kind of the way they looked at it, the big difference between these two was there was a huge section of Barfield that would go towards Plaineview. And so, yes, people made comments about those two areas, but if you're making comments about concept two, that leans more towards supporting concept one. So like for that second bullet, consider moving Savannah Ridge and Indian Hills subdivision back into Barfield, that's already accomplished in concept one. And so that's showing, that's showing more support for concept one outside of concept two for that area. And then you see a couple of the same, similar issues, consider moving area in downtown to Riverdale High School to relieve. Blackman is a consideration. You see about the survey, how many people actually took it? It opened September eighteenth on the next page, closed September twenty-ninth. So one thousand four hundred and sixteen participants in English, eight in Spanish, three in Arabic, pretty good participation sample. You're looking for somewhere around ten percent. So we're of your population and for the number of impacted areas, and some of these aren't three to four years out, pretty good population size. Then it tells you about the community, just to kind of show you demographically. Flipping over to the survey results, elementary, this gives you an idea of kind of where the splits were, so you could see where people were ranking. Elementary part two, same thing, which concept map? What are you valuing as the biggest priority? I don't think that's a surprise that for parents, impacts on the students, transportation, neighborhoods intact is their number one priority to where for when we're looking at it from a fiscal or capacity standpoint, our biggest impact is looking to see how many seats can we use in building feasibility. So you would expect to see some differences. And then you see on that last page says feedback themes elementary, just the different breakdowns of kind of some overall challenges and themes that they are looking at between some of the different themes. So not going to go over middle and high school. Just wanted to show you kind of how they had this going, like the different layout. You will see that some of the high schools, not surprisingly, the schools impacted the most. Blackman, Oakland and Segal had the highest amount of comments. And so we can only make comments based on where, or make recommendations based on where the comments come from. So you're not going to see a whole lot of Smyrna, Laverne, they weren't impacted in these plans because we need a new building. So you're not going to see those schools represented. So we have, again, our principal meeting with them next week, so they're going to start making revisions. I'm happy to, I'll tell you the direction I kind of, I told them I would get you all's input today, is they asked, do you want them to consolidate all the comments and try to put them into one concept map or still to work with two concept maps so that there's two real distinct differences? They've been going from the two concept map, showing that one does a certain thing and two does something a little bit different even though they're similar. And happy to take any suggestions you guys would like to see feedback wise.
So you told them, just for clarification, sorry. Today, we're to talk amongst ourselves and kind of decide?
Not necessarily then decide, just that there's a different format than you would like other than the two concepts we've been presenting.
Oh, okay, just a format?
Yep.
Okay, got it, okay.
There's a different format that you would like it all to be combined into one instead of two different concepts, just to let them know because that changes numbers a little bit.
Okay.
I was just going to say that, I mean, these concepts, if you go back to page two, concept one, the favorability is slim on all of them.
It is, yep.
But I like the idea of having two different concepts, even if they're going to put the feedback in just so we can look at those again and maybe make more suggestions.
Yeah, yeah.
That's what the community was used to seeing, so.
Mm-hmm.
That was your answer as well.
I was just going to say, I like the two concepts because I think it gives us two different things to look at and there are things that could be kind of pulled and adopted to one or the other. If there was one piece that just seemed like it wasn't working, but we like this concept, so we can kind of move that piece versus looking at something as a whole and it just seems like it might be more problematic.
Great.
I have a question. So the comments, is it?
Which part of it are they going to add into? Is it this page which says potential revisions to concepts or is it the comments, the section where?
So the potential revisions to concepts came from the comments.
Okay.
This is their summary of all the different themes that came out of.
Okay, so this is what they're going to be working on? Okay, gotcha.
And based on the feedback that our principals see as well.
Okay.
Because they know their zones, just as well if not better than anyone else.
Okay.
Other comments, questions?
All right, so next, I mentioned it, so mental health is something that has become controversial, but I don't want it to be controversial. And so really, it just comes down to us providing whatever help we need so our students can learn in our classrooms. And so kind of what my charge is, we have schools, rightfully so, and our district staff who are, some of our kids need supports that as educators, we can't provide. And so we had some of these, especially some of our Title One schools, David Urie and not a Title One school, but Walter Hill as well, is that right, Ms. Baltimore? I know you're sitting over there, that we use Project Base and volunteer mental health and we've used some different groups to provide services to our students. I've been leery to bring forward an MOU knowing kind of what the background and environment is around mental health. So I wanted to just give some, a chance for them to be able to present, talk about what they do. We have lost one of our staff members in that time. Actually, I think she's here today, even though we, we, she has left and gone to them in a little bit different role. But Ms. Baltimore, I don't know how you want to handle introductions? How do you want to go for it? I know you didn't expect to be called on the spot, but...
Jordan is here in this area. I'll let her go ahead and introduce her team.
Ms. Jordan, I'm on the last row. And if you can give us a background of everything.
Because I'm not as familiar with it as well.
And I brought some handouts that I did not think to hand them out in advance, but if you don't mind, I'll come around and give everybody one.
Yeah.
All right. Thank you, Melanie. Hello. Thank you for this opportunity to share about this outstanding program that Volunteer Behavioral Health has to offer your schools called Project Basic. My name is Amy Jordan and I am the Director of Grants for our school-based services at Volunteer. In full disclosure, I am a product of Rutherford County Schools K through twelve. I am married to a county school teacher and I have two children within this district. So it is my privilege to share with you something I am deeply invested in and passionate about. And that is to come alongside you as a dedicated local resident, working in the related field of child and family behavioral health in order to invest in our students, to grasp tomorrow's opportunities. That sounds familiar to you? I'd like to tell you how our goals can work together to achieve each of our missions. The Volunteer mission sounds similar to the district mission statement. Our mission is to serve individuals, families and communities through prevention, treatment and recovery services, ensuring that help today leads to a better tomorrow. One way we do this is through Project Basic, an evidence-based mental health prevention and intervention, early intervention program for children in elementary schools focused on grades K through three. And funded by a grant from the Tennessee Department of Mental Health and Substance Abuse Services. This program is provided at no cost to schools or families and parental consent is required for services. Melanie O'Dowd, our technical assistant who provides objective oversight to half of our basic sites, including Rutherford County, is here to tell you more about the program in just a minute. To give you a quick background of our agency, Volunteer Behavioral Health, locally known as the Guidance Center, is a CARF accredited, five oh one C three nonprofit behavioral health organization providing services to children, youth and adults and families in thirty-two counties across middle, upper Cumberland and southeast Tennessee. As one of Tennessee's largest providers, Volunteer has been a leader in rural community mental health services here in Tennessee for over fifty years. We value our partnerships with other community entities such as local schools to ensure we offer uniquely committed resources and support using a strengths-based approach to behavioral health care. This just means that we find what's working and help replicate that across the system with parental involvement and permission along the way. Our staff are rooted in towns in which we work. Helping families and children here in Rutherford County means so much to us because we are the families here as well. We seek out to hire quality staff that are invested in children's academic success and that understand the support teachers in our schools need with today's issues. The school-based services we embed through partnerships in thirty-three districts are meant to be longstanding. They are part of the school-based mental health and safety plan of Governor Lee. In his February twenty-twenty-three State of the State address, he said every single person has a role to play in school safety. He recognizes the importance of student access to mental health care and resources as a crucial part of school safety and added even more school mental health resources like ours to the budget. We want to help ensure we do our part for the governor's call to action by continuing to offer programs like Basic, which enhance a positive school climate, provide support to students who struggle in the classroom setting and help prevent and intervene for those children who need additional behavior or mental health support and referral inside and outside of the school day. Melanie will tell you more about how Basic helps teach young children life skills that prepare them for success. And then I've got a few stories to tell you after that.
Hello, good evening. So I am the regional coordinator, otherwise known to the state as the technical assistant for the Basic program and our grant. Project Basic has been a program since nineteen eighty-five, so we are actually a proven database program as well. What we stand for is better attitudes and skills in children. That's what Basic, when you break down that acronym, is. We are there to try to make children happier, healthier, well-rounded, little successful human beings. This program was founded by a federal block grant with a focus on prevention and early intervention services in a school-type setting. We have now expanded into sixty-two counties in Tennessee. So even though we've been around for, you know, since nineteen eighty-five, our expansion has been recent. We've had expansion over the years, but there's been a big burst in expansion. They used to have one technical assistant and then they moved to two and now we have four. So we are expanding across Tennessee. Our focus, though, still remains to this day to focus on the struggles that the children have in the school setting. Usually these are behavioral focused, but they can also definitely be trauma and mental health focused as well on top of that. Project Basic aims to improve the school experience overall for all children in the elementary school level and teachers and increase, and we have an increased focus on prevention in K through third, as Amy had mentioned. So that is our main objective, is to focus on K through third and give them the skills that they need, kind of that base skill as they move up in their school, in their school life. Presented in front of you in the handout is the four main ways that we support inside the school system. So that very top cover is the one that we do the most. I have not exactly said everything that's on your paper, but I'm going to give you just a rundown of each area. So our first program focus... So our first program focus is, of course, a whole classroom, um, support focus. So this is every K through third grade would get fun activities, early prevention, early, um, early emotional supports if needed, and just in a school-wide setting where every child gets the same type of services through the classroom interventions. This is on an approved basis through the State of Tennessee and the Regional Coordinators, which is why you also have a book list attached. This is not the only book list that we ever approved, but this is a big chunk of one that we look at, um, from time to time. So all of the CDSs, our Child Development Specialists, get their books approved as they use them throughout the year. Our second programming focus is on early intervention supports and resources for individual students. So as the CDSs are working in their classroom, they're going to be helping identify with those teachers which students do need a little bit more than your typical student in a day, which kids are the ones that are struggling more. So there's that second individualized piece. Our third programming focus is on the teachers through intervention supports and services and resources and coaching. So a teacher can come to us at any time and say, "I need more information on how to help this student with this," and we can help support them in that way. Our fourth programming focus is a school-wide focus. We call it our Climate Enhancement Projects, and it is a school-wide focus for everyone in the school. These can be food drives, these can be helping with, um, clothing drives, these can be anything like a sensory path, or as I heard your sped department say, those de-escalation rooms. We can help with those types of services on a school-wide basis. Over the years, our school systems have seen an increase in at-risk youth and behaviors in schools. One of the things that we would love to do is help support Rutherford County in trying to minimize some of those struggles that we're seeing, trying to get them before they become the kid that's struggling in middle school or in high school. We want to do the early intervention and prevention in the elementary school level. We also have the family piece, of course. We work very strongly with the families as well in order to provide the supports that their children need. So that's like Amy said, if it is something that is not something a teacher is equipped to deal with at school, we help us recognize that and we may refer out to mental health services or other services in the community. We really love children, obviously. We've been doing this since, you know, 85. I'll be honest that I was a CDS for 15 years, so I am very invested in this program as well. I can see the benefits to the families, to the kids, to the teachers, year in and year out, and that's kind of why I accepted the role that I'm in, is to keep that expanding. So we would love to help Rutherford County in their early intervention and early prevention services. We would like to help you ensure that your elementary school students are successful in their school careers and that they have the supports and services that they need. So I'm going to turn it back over to Amy for her examples and stories.
And just one note to add, um, when she talks about what our CDSs can bring, they actually have a pretty large supply budget. So if your schools do not, if your schools where we have Project Basic do not have the funds to make a calming corner or something like that, we can help out with that with our supplies, which has been a really great benefit, especially to a lot of our rural counties, they really appreciate that, those COVID dollars, we put those to use. So, lastly, I do want to share some concrete examples from our staff who served at Walter Hill and David Urie last year, and then also teachers and admin that have sent us some comments. From our specialists, being able to support teachers is so rewarding. Every day they are in the classroom at the front lines, teaching, loving, supporting so many little lives. What we see, what we don't see from the outside, outside the classroom are the struggles they face every day. Teachers are trying to teach children that do not have the most basic life skills, children that lack the ability to self-regulate, make and keep friends, build healthy relationships, be accountable for their actions and choices, respect others, and identify and manage emotions, transition from one activity to the other, be kind. All these skills are needed for successful learners. A first grader last year would yell, scream, and throw chairs across the room. He was a runner also. He knew he was angry, but he didn't know what to do with his anger and didn't know how to calm down before he'd escalate out of control. I started working with him, not me, this is, this is one of our CDSs. I started working with him using a game to create teachable moments about frustration and anger management. We worked on using our words and focused breathing to not get angry. I was called to his classroom a few times after I began working with him and would arrive to a very upset child, but now he had these tools. I would get down on his level and I would calmly talk him through his breathing and focus his attention on something I knew he enjoyed, not yelling, not throwing, not running. He was able to put, was he able to put it in to use without me, with just one year of her working with this child? No, not yet, but it's a process and it was working. The teacher saw a difference and so did his family and his therapist. His, another student, a second grader, has experienced tremendous trauma, so much that it had physical impacts on his development. He had built a wall around him and kept silent at first, but he kept coming to me, to see me even though some days we just sat in silence. Eventually he started to trust and listen, and we worked on positive affirmations, like speaking kind things about ourselves while we looked in a mirror. He had homework every week to work on his affirmations with his grandmother as well. We were able to work on anger management after he started building a little confidence in himself. By the end of the school year, this child was completely different. He wasn't getting in trouble or having angry outbursts in class or at home. He was communicating his feelings, utilizing the skills he's learned, and was able to stay in the classroom and learn. One of these students I worked with last year was dealing with a lot of separation anxiety during morning drop-off at school. The family said they didn't know what was causing this. Some mornings it was very challenging to get him in the building without tears. The story means a lot to me because this was, this is not really my daughter, but this was my daughter. My oldest was like this. When I first began to meet with this student, he was very shy. Over the course of the school year, I witnessed so much growth in him. He really opened up and began to have an easier arrival time. He needed additional support, if he needed additional support on certain mornings, I would greet him as he arrived in, at school. His family reported that he's doing much better at using his words to express emotions at home and telling them what he needed at the moment. They are so proud of him and so am I. And then here's some additional impact statements from the school staff. There was one particular girl, uh, we were told about, whose family had gone through a traumatic experience. She had seen significant disruptions in her home, and, um, the staff at David Urie said, um, she expressed great sadness because her specialist has not been back to school this year to help her, um, through those ongoing issues. David Urie also said they had a very positive impact on, the program had a very positive impact on students served, and these connections are so important to our students, not just at David Urie but countywide. Please keep these children, these children in consideration as you all make a decision. Another stated the following. Basic had a major impact on our teachers, students, and families. All of those people who had been asking about it and, all of those people have been asking about it and wanting to be in contact with the specialist again this year. We need the program. Here are some of the positives. This is from, um, a teacher or administrator's perspective. Teachers noticed a difference in students' reaction when entering in class after she started the K-2 programming. Students that were meeting with her in all grade levels had lower office referrals and were able to accurately communicate their feelings, thoughts, and needs. She was a great support for adults in the building in a crisis, helped with escalation, escalated peer issues, and provided emotional regulation assistance in classrooms. Number four, she assisted our behavior specialists and counselors in creating effective small groups to address specific concerns like aggression, self-harm, and confidence, et cetera. Number five, parents missed her knowledge and support in finding and receiving outside sources. Our entire school community is reeling from the loss of this program in our school. I hope we can get the program back up and running for the benefit of our entire community. And then lastly, here's a collection from Walter Hill. Most school counselors do not teach within the classroom now, so it was nice to have life skills taught in the classroom again. I absolutely loved having her in my classroom. She was able to guide the students in much-needed activities that were meaningful and educational. The impact Ms. Cushman had on Walter Hill is immeasurable. Her relationship with the community, families, and our sweet little students has been missed. She worked harder, she worked hard to foster a working relationship with parents to bridge the gap between home, school, and mental health. Through her approach to mental health, students that sometimes slipped between the cracks were seen and their voices were heard. We have missed Ms. Cushman and I hope to have her around school again. There are many other examples we could give you. Parents, students, teachers, all of them need a person to listen, assist them, and provide the support to have functional classroom settings where children can learn, and that's what Basic can provide.
We would love if you have any questions to answer them after.
Questions or comments? Ready?
Can you kind of walk me through, I guess, what it looks like? Couple of things, actually. So I, I've heard, um, like the life skills in this, the classroom program, so if one of your specialists goes into a classroom for that, I guess, what does that look like? And then the more individual, like one-on-one process, I guess, if you can walk me through, like if a teacher identifies a child, I guess, what that process looks like? Can I take this one?
I'm Lyndy Booth, I was the specialist at David Urie last year, I'm now a program director. But, um, when we would go into a classroom to identify with a student, we would first just observe, you know, see what's going on, what happened to lead up to that moment. And then we would create a plan with that teacher. Um, we'd sit down and just write a plan together, collaborate, and see what works for that student. Um, oftentimes it would result in me seeing that student individually, which would take permission from the parents, I'd contact the parents and tell them what was going on with their student. And once we would start working with that student individually, um, it takes a lot of time to work with kids in that capacity. You start with building that relationship, them learning how to trust you, you getting to know their likes and dislikes, their triggers, and you develop a plan around that. The first two examples that Amy read were my students. Um, the first grader, he was a violent boy. I mean, he was throwing desks across the room in first grade. He was actually, he's actually one of my favorites. He had a lot of anger he didn't know how to express, but by the end of several rounds of Candy Land and plotting the game to where he would be forced to lose, of course he didn't know that. And working with him on losing and then eventually working to where we just played it the right way, and he would win sometimes and he would lose sometimes, and just sharing those moments and working through how to handle that letdown and handle, how to handle that excitement followed by letdown, because you know with Candy Land, sometimes you're ahead and you get chopped back down. So we had to work through all those emotions at the same time, and he was able to. By the end of the school year, his meltdowns had almost disappeared, and he had such a strong relationship. And the first day of school, he ran into the school so excited to see Ms. Booth again, and, um, it was hard not to be able to meet with him, but to know that he has those skills now, you know, it's not perfect. It, it's going to take more time, but he'd made so much progress. I hope that answered your question.
And on the more technical side, there is a referral process that is followed by all CDSs that's approved by the state, so they all have the same type of referral paperwork. They all have the same initial assessment with the child to help figure out what are the needs and what are we looking at, um, as far as possible behaviors, possible issues at home, possible issues in the classroom. Um, so there is a set referral process for an individualized student as well.
Okay, and when you guys do the, like, the classroom programming, is there a curriculum that you're following?
Yes. So each CDS is allowed to write their own curriculum, and then it gets sent to their, um, regional coordinator, their TA, and it gets approved at the beginning of the school. So that's when the TA, we are looking for those, um, trauma-informed, data-backed books that have been clinically proven to be, um, useful for student prevention, early intervention. If there's a book in question, then we take it to the TA team, which is four of us, and then we usually go to the person in our block, Katie, who is with the state. So there are five other people that look at that curriculum if needed. Um, if it's not something that we typically have already seen, there are certain books where you see it now and like, oh yeah, we use that all the time. This one is effective, it works, they can use it, they understand it, and so they impact on them. So there is, um, a set curriculum at the beginning of the year based on each school and each site, and that is something that we are always willing to share, and we're with the teachers, the principals, anyone who wants to see that, we are very open to working with you on this.
Yeah, I want to add that we also include a parent information form that's sent out at the beginning of every school year or at the start of every CDS. That information form is going to tell the parent about the program. Um, I believe we send the consent form out then, because we know when we send it out with the school's paperwork, we're more likely to get it back at the beginning of the year. So we inform them, and then if we're working individually with the child, we are calling home. We are calling home immediately to let the parent know that we've seen their child and, you know, what's going on and what we plan to do and, and discuss all of that with them. So parents are, that is one of our very important factors of any of our school-based mental health programs.
There's a free page permission form for individual kids.
And yes, the, the, the books and the activities that they use for their, for their lessons, for the whole classroom lessons, um, principals, you all, anyone, anyone that has a say can make a say on what books we use or do not use. We would love that input.
So this focuses for K through third, K through, and then, so I heard that you guys work with kids, you make a plan for a child that's being identified, and I'm wondering within your experience last year, if you guys worked with kids that were already having, uh, plans because of their behavioral aspect of it, if, if you had any experience with that? Not necessarily just general ed kids, but kids that are actually have IEPs with a behavioral plan?
Yeah, a lot of my referrals came from the sped team, um, from the behavioral interventionist at the school, the guidance counselor. It was like collectively, they would send me those kids. I had.
What we can't do?
Do not restrain.
Sure, yeah.
We do not restrain children, that's against.
Because you have to be trained, yeah.
Yes. Yep.
And the other thing along the lines of IEPs? Is we cannot carry out the IEP, because that's definitely the school system, but we can also be written in as those extra supports in IEP plans and FBO fours. We don't do the goals, but we can help support the teachers and the sped team in those goals. When they're practicing them for five hours a week, or whatever that child's goal is, we can be the backup man that's doing it kind of behind the scenes, giving them even more support and more time with that single goal. Um, we don't document it and it doesn't go towards their IEP hours, but we can definitely back them up in that area.
Did you guys vote to different schools or you stayed mainly in one school or to get to know the kids in that aspect?
Okay.
I was assigned David Urie, Michael Warner was assigned at Walter Hill, I'm associated at Palmer Schools.
And we have an MOA specifically with that school.
That is one, it's a one-to-one thing.
We do have one small county that has a CDS that goes to two different schools, but it is because of student size at each school, and then they have their own MOAs at each county.
And you're present every day at the school?
Yeah.
Monday, Thursday.
Monday, Thursday.
Yeah, Friday is grant-funded work. Considered our office day because we are grant-funded. We are without this.
People, do you have a question?
Yeah, so how many specialists did you guys have in our schools last year?
In Rutherford County?
Yeah. Yeah, two. Okay, that was just David Urie and Walter.
And that's the target for this year is what it's the same schools.
Yeah, and Walter Hill has, um, the behavior program similar like in Mitchell-Hilton. I'm sorry?
They have one school counselor at Walter Hill only.
Yeah.
That entire school. Not that, not that, our specialists are school counselors, we do not replace school counselors in any way whatsoever. We help, we add. We help, we add to the pieces of the puzzle that children need these days.
Thank you.
I've got one more question.
Yes, ma'am.
And I don't know if this is better for you or you, but.
We just hire all these new behavior specialists. I'm curious, like, what the fundamental difference would be, would you need those people?
Yeah, great question. Completely different sort of actions.
Behavior interventionist for classroom teachers, and so they wouldn't necessarily have any mental health background whatsoever. So they're truly just there to help in the time of an emergency that is happening and be able to provide any type of resource the kid needs to calm down and deregulate, but it's truly, they've had training, we've provided, they're not going to have the background that a mental health provider would.
If I can add, the purpose of the early intervention and prevention is to help children not need these behavior specialists, these higher escalated resources once they get to middle and high school. This is to reduce the behavior as they get older.
So I want to say something. So I've been working with the CD schools for a year and a half now, and the past year, I've been mostly at the best program at the city school, and I've seen where a kid, like you talked about, that was having a severe, severe meltdown, where he is throwing the desk, he's punching, he's doing all that, and then it gets to a point where he had to be restrained in one particular instance, and there is someone there that is not part of the school but is a additional support to come to the kid, to talk to them, to kind of get them back to a level where there's the de-escalation aspect of it. So I've seen a city school where they add that extra layer where the kid come in, and there's times where they go take a walk, they even had a picnic outside of the classroom just to have a conversation of what is going on, you know? So, so when you were talking about the whole, how does this work with the behavior coaches and the staff, that kind of gave me that mental picture of how it would work, I've seen, so.
And one of the great things to pick you back off of that is the fact that once that bond is there between the CDS and the child, and hopefully the teachers as we develop those as well, sometimes that.
Meltdown can be stopped in mid-meltdown as soon as that person that is there comfortable in de-escalation walks into the room. So we do help identify who is at the school, whether it's us as a CDS, whether it's their gym teacher, who is their favorite teacher. We can build in that plan of, you know, when he's starting to get frustrated, let's go check out the gym and just watch the gym teacher and say hi, and then we'll come back. Doesn't even have to be that he stays with the gym teacher, it's that de-escalation process and getting him back to the classroom.
You do refer out for mental health?
Yes.
Yes, our CDSs are not trained therapists, so they're kind of that first step of identifying and observing, and then once everybody on the team, teachers, administration, and parents, once they decide there is more to that struggle than just something simple that we can do with behavior modification, we definitely refer on to other services.
And we play nice in the sandbox, I have Centerstone, Stars, lots of these other programs are in your county schools, and so if there is a school that has, I don't know if David Urie or Walter Hill has either one of those, so if they did, and we felt it appropriate, the family felt it appropriate, we would help connect those dots to get them into the school-based therapist or some outside resource.
Thank you, thank you so much, we appreciate it.
Thank you.
I'm Jeremy Mon.
Would you like to speak, Dr. Sullivan?
Yes, so for me, from kind of the director of schools perspective, is that we don't have the ability to serve some of these things, and there are a lot of funds that are available that our general assembly has put forth for us to be able to use. And so there are a lot of districts because of the unfortunate tags that have gone around with mental health. I don't think anybody said it before, we're not trying to indoctrinate anyone, we're trying to get our kids support they need to learn in the classroom, and our general assembly has given the availability of districts to get funds, and right now, we're not utilizing those. We have, I have two MOUs or MOAs, a memorandum of agreement, that have been sitting on my desk since May, June, probably at least for this, that I have not yet signed because I didn't know the direction that we wanted to go as a board. So just individually, over the next couple of weeks, if you all have conversations with me, so I know which direction to move, I definitely feel like our kids need extra support, but I'm also very cautious of what goes in front of our students, so we don't have an issue like we did with a Stars counselor last year. That was, so I'm much more open to having individual conversations and communications that the parents agree to than opening up to a curriculum that I haven't seen yet. And so, no, that's kind of where my perspective is, is I want to see any curriculum that goes in front of any student, but as far as students getting support they need with parent permission, that is not a school counselor or a teacher's role, that's not what we do.
I want you to know, I've looked at your list of books, I've just glanced at them. I used many of these books teaching, so, chrysanthemum.
You guys work with, do you work with a juvenile detention center at all, at any, no, right now? Okay.
Thank you, thank you, Board. Ms. Rosales, do you have anything to add?
I don't have anything to add, but I'm sure I will be getting something soon.
Okay, that's just fine. Dr. Sullivan, you want to look at open positions?
We can do that Thursday.
All right.
I did miss this part of the director's update. You have a parent series in front of you? So this is kind of connecting, we'll have another one connected to that first one. So Mrs. Darby had brought up a great point maybe a month and a half ago about social media and just some information for parents about what is appropriate and what's not appropriate for our students, because you can very quickly, myself included, I'm realizing I'm aging out of what is appropriate in technology and what is not. So there are things that my kids, and I'm like, what are you talking about? I have no idea what that is, and I shouldn't be aging out already? At least I don't think so, but I am figuring out what's appropriate, so our.
This one here. It happens fast.
Yeah, yeah. Our instructional technology team is going to plan much more information, but this is kind of just a beginning start for us. You'll see with our school counseling departments, you'll see six different trends that we're looking at to cover for parents over the school year.
Could I add one more? October the 21st, there is going to be a dyslexia presentation at Riverdale High School, and I would like to add that because.
Twenty-first.
It's from, there's two sessions, from eight AM to twelve fifteen PM, and then another one from one to five fifteen, where at Riverdale, it's SLD Dyslexia Presentation, open to anyone.
Yeah, I've seen the Facebook ads that you've been promoting.
My son did not have dyslexia, he had dysgraphia, which is a similar, but there are a lot of students and a lot of parents who, children suffering dyslexia, so I'd like to put the word out on this.
Thank you. Dr. Sullivan?
Yeah, I also forgot. So Dr. Martin is our new deputy director. She has not officially started yet, but she's here serving kind of in that capacity, so she'll be over there. I know you guys know Dr. Martin from serving on policy, but congratulations, I'll look forward to working with her.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. I'm going to say something that's not really totally relevant, but I want to say shout-out to the media team for creating this infographic and putting.
That was our counseling team.
That was you? Well, shout-out to you for this infographic, it looks really nice. Christine Bryant did. She's the mastermind on those designs. I, this is great. Tell her, thank you, looks great, this infographic.
Yes, I did teach Kmart.
Oh, you teach Kmart, too?
Yes, I did.
We just need a list of who.
That's a big job, because.
Yeah.
I taught a lot of kids, and some of them are so highly successful, I just, you know, brag occasionally. Before we close out, I want to say that Claire Maxwell and I went to the TSBA Chairman Training Today, and one of the things we learned that we haven't been doing is that when we make a motion to adjourn, it has to have a second. So I always know who's going to make the motion to adjourn, and I think I know who's going to make the second. If there's no more general discussion, do we have a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Not you, Frances, it's Claire.
Well, we got it done.